Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and go to order the meeting of the city council. And if everyone could stand in for the pleasure of the agents, and then we'll stand before the speakers. Okay, and I've left with a piece called "Order."
Councilmember Burns?
Present.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Here.
Councilmember Motney?
Here.
Councilmember Danaberg is absent. Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Here.
Mayor Malo?
Here.
Seeing that we have no recognition or appointments, uh, we will go to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have two email public comments, and then we have three registered for in-person public comment.
Okay. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view, to maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views. Speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Okay, who was first?
Our two email public comments were Evan Melstead and Matthew Tosco. Our first in-person will be Zach Carlson. Doesn't appear that he's here, so Dee Urban.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council, city staff. Uh, my name is Dee Urban. I live in work and play in Ward 6 here in Bloomington. And we'd like to just enter to you for a minute. Let's say that you go in and you go to prepare your dinner, and you begin to cut your vegetables, and you cut your finger. Fingers cut. What do you do? Put a little towel on that, hang on to it for a second, run to the bathroom, open up the medicine cabinet, and what do you grab? A Band-Aid. You take that Band-Aid, stick it on your little finger, you're all dead. Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe you put some peroxide on there. Or you're seeing the peroxide from when you let the dog out and he got sprayed by a skunk. Why do we have an emergency cabinet? Why do you have that in your bathroom with all the wonderful supplies? Everything from these bandages to rubbing alcohol, whatever it might be needed. You have these things because of, in case of an emergency. Because when you have an emergency, you really don't have time to ask your partner, "Hey, could you run down while I'm bleeding here to the, to the store and get me just one Band-Aid?" There's no time for that. You just don't put the Band-Aid on. Tonight, the police department has put in on your consent agenda that they would like for you to purchase an armored vehicle called a Bearcat. Now, one could look at this particular item and go, "This is a military Gestapo, you know, crazy thing." But that's not what this is. What this is, is a tool in the tool bag. Because when my refrigerator broke, I couldn't use my refrigerator for two days because I had to have one special tool. Now that tool is in my tool bag. If my refrigerator door breaks again, I can fix it because I have the right tool. If one of the people in our community is in a hostile situation, the police department now has an emergency vehicle to save them. If we get 100 years to know, and somebody's had a heart attack and they can't get to them, they can take that vehicle and get through there, and they can get those people out. So I don't want you to think of this as a knocking down the door, trampling over people's rights, or any kind of thing like that. No, this is a piece of equipment that we need in case of an emergency. I don't believe ever that the safety of our citizens can be compromised. We should always be looking for a way to make sure that we, as a community, are ready. Whether that's a small cut or a large cut. It, it doesn't matter the size or the type of emergency. It's making sure that as a people and as a community, we're safe, we're ready, and that our first responders can get to us as people. So I would con- please ask that you either approve it on the consent agenda, or if it does get pulled, have an honest discussion about what it is to be ready in case of an emergency. Because I'm pretty sure all of you have Band-Aids. And wouldn't you want to make sure you have a Band-Aid in case somebody else got hurt? That's why we say yes to these things and not say no. And hopefully, I have 20 seconds left. I also happen to be on the board for the West Bloomington Militarization Project. The next Saturday on the 19th, we are having our annual West Fest celebration. This is where we all go out and we have food, and we celebrate each other, and we show the pride of our west side. I'd like to invite all of you to come over to Washington and Allen next Saturday at 5:00 and join in our celebration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't have any idea of the time, the three minutes that I keep seeing that we have. Is anybody keeping track of the clock?
Yes.
You are? Oh, okay, good. Thank you. All right, 'cause I can't see it like I usually can. Okay, uh, who do we have next?
Uh, next up, we have Carl Funkel. And he'll be the last.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I just have, uh, two questions. One mine, one a little bit more major. They've both probably been asked and answered many times, but I've not seen or read anything about it, nor have I heard. So I'll ask mine first, and that is, uh... My wife is concerned about the parking situation in town where you have the cafe-style eateries. She is wondering if they actually pay the city for the use of the sidewalk and the parking spaces that would normally be used for the average citizen rather than for commercial ventures. And, uh, one concern is the mistake kitchen, which has encroached onto the, uh, one-lane traffic left. So if you've got someone that doesn't know how to park, you're pretty well stuck. The other question, which was near and dear to my heart, is why and for how long will West Washington be closed? I understand it's an EPA cleanup. I don't know if you guys have any input into how that works. But if it's a safety issue, I would argue that it's an unsafe issue since the traffic either has to go down Market Street, which most people will avoid, like to play, and will be diverted over onto West Olive with the grade school, or onto West Oakland. Both very narrow, both very residential streets. And that's where people are going to go because West Washington was the main thoroughfare to get from one side of town to the other without the impediment of going down Market Street. And, uh, if you guys have anything that, that you can tell me that helps clarify when we'll be able to use that street again, that would be greatly appreciated. So, I think that that's it. I appreciate your time, and if you can answer, that'd be great.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, uh, the consent agenda. So we are, um, is there a... I understand that there is one item that is going to be pulled for it. Okay. Um, and since we already know it is seven... Is it E or D? Seven D. So is there any other items anybody would like to pull? Okay, all right. Is there a motion to approve, uh, item, the consent agenda with the exception of item 7D?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. With the exception of item B.
7D.
Like David.
D, yes, as in Donald. Um, okay. So motion by councilmember Bowlin, and then second by councilmember Ward.
Your real call?
Real call, yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda with the exception of 7D passes, no ways to announce. So now we're gonna move on to item 7D. I know several people wanted to pull item 7D, so I don't know who would like to go first and speak to it?
Sure, I can do that. Councilmember Ward? I have some questions, and thank you, Chief Bloomington, for your response, um, to the several questions I, I posited to you earlier today. Um, I wonder if you, just for the sake of, of the rest of the community hearing those responses, would be willing to, to answer them for us again. I think there's been quite a bit of discussion about this.
Actually, I'll jump in, uh, while the chief's walking up to the mic. A couple of comments, uh, on this topic. For the chief answers the specifics. Vermont of back and forth with the elected officials. Definitely appreciate the heads-up that he gave us, that this was not necessarily opposition, but just questions. Wanted to turn this into a little bit more of a community conversation. Then regarding, uh, Chief Bloomington at Bloomington Police Department. I see, uh, Hey Chief Wonsley in the audience as well. Uh, this, this is an item, and, and these are my city manager comments real quick before the chief gets into the specifics. Uh, it is low-frequency, high-risk. Uh, it is a resource and a tool that's used not just for the police department, but for, uh, victims, suspects. You know, God forbid we're called out on something like that. But I also wanna take the opportunity to share that, uh, the police department does an excellent job of not asking for every tool that might make their job a little bit easier, you know, given whatever situation might be out there. This is a thoughtful approach to a piece of equipment that the chief feels strongly, uh, the community needs. Chief, I know, do me a favor. Uh, older woman Ward, ask questions, just if you would refresh and ask the question, and then, uh, share your response.
Yes, sir, no problem. Good evening, I'm city council elected officials, I'm certainly mayor, deputy city manager and city manager. Thank you for this opportunity. I stand here to represent the men and women of the police department, but expansively, this community, and I'm obligated to make sure this community is as safe as, as it needs to be, um, irregardless of what could be predicted, and, and certainly for those high volatile unpredictable situations. I give my heart, my soul to this job. I take it serious, as do my senior leadership, and we feel that this is appropriate for this community. The question was close to me earlier. One is, how many instances have there been in the last two? I'm sorry, last year or two, when this vehicle would have been useful as part of a SWAT operation? The response, five last year, and today, six. A total of 39 instances in the past five years with this vehicle been, um, used by the Bloomington Police Department. That is not accounting for, um, the, uh, need for some of our partners, Normal Police Department, McLean County Sheriff's Department, and ISU Police Department. How many times in the same period has the Bloomington Police Department SWAT been utilized? The same SWAT utilizes a robust scoring assessment tool to determine if SWAT will be authorized by the chief or is designated an assistant chief. SWAT should only be used when the Bloomington Police Department or requesting agencies have determined the suspect offender is armed. This is a highly scrutinized category. SWAT has not been used to deal with non-violent, non-armed criminal offenders. How many times in the past period have weapons, guns, tasers, et cetera, been displayed or deployed as part of SWAT operations? SWAT deploys with weapons at the ready because they're dealing with armed offenders. SWAT has not discharged a weapon at any individual during any of these successful operations. Would this vehicle be deployed to Normal and/or other non-Bloomington parts of McLean County? And if so, would those entities contribute to the cost, purchase, and maintenance? Local law enforcement agencies often lean on each other for specialty equipment. For instance, the Bloomington Police Department relies on the Illinois State Police for specialized equipment, even a Bearcat, to respond to our community when a need exists, and that has occurred on at least three occasions in the past few years. We have frequently provided specialized equipment to our partner agencies and receive such generally at no cost. I liken it to that of mutual aid for the fire department. An ambulance, fire engine, swift water rescue, hazmat, et cetera, are all items that are shared specialties and specialty equipment which benefits the communities as a whole, and that flows both directions. BPD is exploring an agreement for agencies to sign in the event the deployment leads to damage of the Bearcat. Will be working with legal in the coming months if this is approved, to, uh, solidify and finalize an agreement. The Bloomington Police Department have also, have, has also used this unit during the worst flooding, or would have used this unit during the worst flooding and snow events the past three years. Several times. During approximately eight weather events where individuals were stranded in their vehicles in the snow, snowbanks or ditches, or in the pool of high water. Those were the responses provided.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have, um, one other question, and that has to do with, um... This is an armored vehicle. It's not an armed vehicle, correct?
That is correct. It will not have any weapons attached to it, nor does it have the capability of shooting any weapons.
Other than the battery ram capability?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, so this is not a tank?
That is correct. It is not.
Okay, just wanting to get that out there on the record, um, in front of the council. I am concerned about increasing levels of militarization and the perceptions that that creates. And so it's reassuring to me that this is not an armed vehicle. It is not a tank. And that's what leaves me more comfortable with this. I am concerned about the perceptions, though, that I've heard from, from members of the community who have raised questions about what the, the tendency toward increased militarization, um, what impression that leaves. And that, that leaves me wanting to, um, to say that there are some things that I don't think you should have in your medicine cabinet. And I, I'm guessing, based on the city manager's comments, that there are probably some things that you're not asking for that we could be having in the medicine cabinet metaphorically. I, I wanna continue to have these conversations so that we can ensure that we're all on the same page in this community around that. So thanks for answering the questions.
Yes, ma'am. I, I do have a, a response to the militarization because I know it's a concern I've, I've heard of myself. And what I will share with you is, um, the military operates under a different standard operating procedure. And we have, um, operating procedures that are in concert with the expectations of, of the 21st century policing model, for instance, that are in, in line with the International Tactical Officers Association and the Illinois Tactical Officers Association. And given that we are a, an agency, um, that is accredited, there are standards that are in place. And so we have to have these robust management rights, um, standard operating procedures in order to make sure we, we employ the best practices that are out there in this profession to get it right. And so that is, that is the distinct difference between a military and a local police department. We do have rules in place that we have to abide by, the constitutional policing elements, um, that we will stay diligent with and have strict guidelines in, in play for use of this vehicle.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Councilmember Hendricks?
Uh, I only have one little question from older woman Ward. But you had mentioned how you had spoken with different, uh, minority of police partnership organizations such as the NAACP, Not in Our Town, Black Lives Matter, those sorts of groups. Can you speak at all to how those conversations went, kind of the outcome, the feelings from those groups in relation to this vehicle?
Yes, sir. Um, I, I had the, the open conversation there at the meeting. Uh, my, our partners were the Normal Police Department, ISU Police Department, McLean County Sheriff, and members of the Illinois State Police. Um, of course, there's apprehension. And once we went through the, the deliberate sharing of what the intent is, how this vehicle can make this community safer, and trying to answer all those questions or concerns, I, I delivered away from the table with, with some positive, um, response and some, some support, some outright support. I've also had, um, additional conversations with the NAACP. For instance, Black Lives Matter, which was just this past weekend, and other constituents, um, stakeholders in this community. And those conversations have, have went well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Hi, Chief Bloomington. Thank you so much for the data that you provided. I'm so glad that, that we are asking these questions. Um, I guess, uh, related to that, um, I, I'm interested in understanding what current equipment we use that isn't meeting the needs and, and kind of why we're transitioning, why this is the request instead of, um, pursuing current, uh, forms of equipment that we have right now.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I'll, I'll take a step back to, um, to lead up to, to a response for that. About a year and a half ago, we told the Illinois law enforcement alarm system, that's ALEUS, um, their combination of, of somewhat of a mutual aid for law enforcement throughout Illinois. And they were purchasing new Bearcats to replace aged Bearcats that they had in their fleet, which was made available to partner agencies. We were hoping, not only myself, Chief Petrelli from the Normal Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, we're all hoping that we could collectively convince them to let us get one of the used ones. And so the first one, uh, we did not, we were not able to secure. The second one also went to another community, so we, we struck out, um, there. However, we know that this would be a value add because the vehicle we currently have has no armor protection at all. We put members of, of the SWAT team, um, in that vehicle to be transported to, to an event, whether that's a couple miles away, or three or four miles into the county. They don't have the safety equipment, not even the seatbelts, to, um, operate or to be transported safely. The vehicle can be penetrated by any, any handgun, let alone a rifle. Uh, so it has no, no armor protection for those individuals that would deploy from the vehicle. Hot zone. I'll speak to a hot zone. Uh, when dealing with an armed individual, we, we identify where the hot zone is. The hot zone is literally where a person could receive harm, um, from a bullet or otherwise. We put, and we have, a very, um, highly trained group of people that serve as crisis negotiators. We could never introduce a crisis negotiator, nor can we, um, introduce the Bloomington Fire Department tactical medic who goes out with us. I mean, tactical medic is assigned to us for all of our operations. We could never introduce them into the hot zone where at times they are needed or could be needed to provide communication to a person having a mental health crisis, for instance. Or if someone needs some, some triage, some medical attention, that medic didn't, could not operate safely in that vehicle. So we never introduced them into that, into the hot zone. This vehicle will, will definitely provide that opportunity. The one we currently have is not four-wheel drive. It will not evolve for any other rescue type, um, whether that's in the field, or in the ditch, or, uh, snow event, tornado, um, any of those, um, you know, non-made, made, um, challenges that we may face in the future.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Crumpler, and then Councilmember Bowlin.
Thank you, Chief Bloomington. It's, um, really, really great for you to come here tonight and, uh, give us an explanation about this thing, and I really appreciate it. I, I wonder, um, would there be any additional training officers would need, you know, to operate the Bearcat? Would that, you know, be, uh, additional, um, costs to the department of the city?
Yes, sir. So we, we actually, uh, we're, we're saving the city money by, by actually going out to the manufacturer to take receipt of it if it's approved. Assistant Chief Wonsley would be one of those. He would receive training there at, at the facility, um, along with whomever he decides to take with him, more likely SWAT commander. They would bring that training package, train the trainer. There's no special license needed, but we do want to make sure that anyone who operates it understands the fundamental use of it, um, is, is, you know, will be in compliance with policy, but also understand how, how to operate it effectively. Um, and, and so, yes, there will, there will be training provided to those that we designate as operators for this, this vehicle. And the, the concept is that to, to make sure we have those individuals on patrol, um, in addition to SWAT, so, you know, the readiness is 24/7/25.
I have a, more of a comment. You know, I, I, I've, I've always been a supporter of Bloomington Police Department's acquisition of tools to enhance the community's safety. I, I think that, uh, in general, the constituents are very supportive of, of efforts of the department. Always have been in the campaign, which was when I was elected. I really wish, I would, I would like to have some more time, you know, to speak with residents, you know. Just gauge their support of purchasing this vehicle. It, it just seems like a, um, a real expense. You know, the people I've spoken with recently are concerned about more lighting in parks to discourage youth from being in the park late at night, doing inappropriate activities. I talked to, uh, families who want to plant more trees in parks because the, there's no shade and the kids can't play during a hot summer afternoon. They're concerned about signs around busy curbs to get drivers to slow down where children are playing. You know, and, you know, I'm not trying to say that these things are directly tied, you know, to, um, safety in law enforcement, but, but I think those are the things that the people that I represent are obligated to care about. And so I really would like, um, similar time, you know, to gauge, um, support for this particular purchase in my community.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowlin.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that this particular vehicle is to protect the police that are going into an armed situation in order to, well, fix it, for lack of a better word? So, um, for the past two years, we've been talking about gun violence in this community, which I don't believe is that excessive, but there might be a time, God forbid, that somebody in this community or comes into this community with a high-capacity weapon and start shooting. And this particular vehicle would allow the police to go in and fix it. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, and this, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a quick question.
Sure, Councilmember Lee?
Um, I noticed the price tag on the vehicle, and in the grand scheme of things, to me, it seems like a reasonable price. Am I right? Or I don't know how much one of these vehicles costs, but it sounds like it's a used one, or is it a new one? Um, and then it's probably not the Rolls-Royce of the Bearcats, but, um, if you could just explain a little bit about, um, you know, if, if it's new, used, and like operating costs, maybe... and like operating costs, maintenance costs, et cetera?
Yes, sir, very good question, thank you. So the vehicle is brand new. It will be manufactured. It takes about a year to manufacture. Annually, that's a cost of about $12,500 for the twenty-year life that Lankell sends. The range is from fifteen to twenty years. As far as the maintenance costs, it's no different than any other heavy-duty vehicle. You know, the required maintenance and the maintenance schedule is something that can be done locally here. There's no specialty mechanic that's needed to work on the vehicle. And it does come with a warranty, and hopefully that answers your question, sir. Thank you.
And this is something that we may take by our own crews, right, our fleet?
Yes, mayor. If something falls out of warranty, that's covered by the manufacturer. If it needs to go back to the factory, they'll pay for the shipment, or to bring someone here to make those repairs.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Second, I, Councilmember Montney? May I please have a vote?
Councilmember Curran?
No.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpley?
No.
Okay, so the item passes at, I believe, sixty-two, right?
Yes, we have two names to announce. Councilmember Curran and Councilmember Crumpley.
Thank you. We do not have a regular agenda item, so we're gonna move on to city manager's discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and to the community. Two slides, I believe. I know one is, oh, honey. And I pre-ordered my song. It's a First Friday event, I believe. There we go. Oh, honey, First Friday event, and live music from Brianna Thomas. Our very own cat, Murphy, knows her very well in the family. So it's something to definitely consider coming out on the nineteenth. Next slide, please. Downtown Farmer's Market, again, it just proves to be extremely successful, and it's something for people to come out, grab coffee somewhere else, because you're probably not gonna get into the coffee hound on a Saturday morning. So, but it's real nice to see everybody on the block. Chicago Farmer and the Field Notes downtown square on August twenty-sixth. And this is a free concert Saturdays on the square. Other than that, Mayor, I don't have anything. I know we have executive session.
Okay, sounds good. And then the main discussion, I want to echo the comments about the Farmer's Market. I'm hearing a lot of good things about it. Even just as far as extending beyond the square like it was before. So kudos to the art economic development team and also downtown staff members who are working very well with folks in the market. Other thing that I wanted to mention, also related to the economic development team, we had a ribbon cutting for EDP Renewables this past, it was on Thursday? Yes, Thursday afternoon, so that was a great event. The EDP Renewables is a company that focuses on development of solar and also wind energy. And they were, the ribbon cutting was for a training facility for their technicians. So they will be training, you know, at least a hundred people a year, and many of those will be coming from, you know, various areas in the country. So this will be their primary training facility in North America, and could even come from Canada as well. So very excited that they choose Bloomington to be the site for this training facility. So says a lot about where they're very complimentary of the work that they've done with staff to get their facility up to speed, so fantastic. And again, I want to thank Chief Simington for answering all the questions and concerns. I think the work that you and your team are doing in terms of reaching out to folks in the community when there are concerns, I think only lends to, you know, more trust in you and your team as well. So thank you very much for answering all those questions. I think that is all I have. I'm gonna turn over to councilmembers to see if anybody has comments. Councilmember Hendricks?
Just kind of in addition to the Farmer's Market, because we had the Farmer's Market going this weekend downtown. We had the sidewalk sales that were happening downtown, and then we also had Painted Wraith who had their anniversary party, which was the first time that they did that. It was fantastic, and just really downtown was hopping. And they expressed such appreciation to the city for helping them through that process and getting that all set up. So it's so great to see, I mean, downtown is really changing up the ways kind of that we do things, including, you know, Vera and Buck tonight getting their liquor license at their store as well. So I just think it's important to recognize downtown and everything that's happening.
Thank you.
I second that. I had a fabulous time on Saturday at the Farmer's Market at Painted Wraith, vendor booths, and just I had brunch outside. It was amazing.
Okay, I think that is about it. So we are going to, I need to ask for a motion to enter into executive session under section two C twelve oh five ILCS one twenty to discuss a claim settlement.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, so motion by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Hendricks.
We'll do a roll call. Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpley?
Yes.
Okay, so council is entering a executive session per section two C twelve oh five ILCS one twenty to discuss a claim settlement. The room must be cleared during executive session. Due to our alternating location, council will move to an external meeting room to hold the executive session. Council will resume the open session following executive session. However, no additional action will be taken except to adjourn regular session. And at this point, we're going to follow Amanda into the executive session room. Everybody file after Amanda. Ready? Okay, we are back in open session. Just to close, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Ward, those in favor, you can now say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, goodbye.